And start the meeting whenever you'd like.
All right, I call to order the Township Ocean Planning Board Meeting Agenda April 26, 2021. Amy, could you run the roll call?
Mr. DiFilia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Dr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Good? Ms. Clu?
Here.
Mr. Siano?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Chairman DiBenedetto?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The notice of requirements to open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster and is filed in the Ocean in the Office of the Township Clerk on July 27, 2020. Board policy, no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony will be taken after 11:00 PM. Resolution memorializations. Stuart Husney, block 5.03, lots 26 and 27, 14 and 18, Johnson Street, Oakhurst. Minor subdivision approval. Can we get a resolution affirmative?
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
This is Ed. I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second Amy.
Roll call.
Mr. DiFilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
I don't believe I'm eligible.
You weren't there?
I don't believe so.
Discontinue.
That's fine.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Clu?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman DiBenedetto?
Yes.
Passes.
Case carried to May 24, 2021. 1803-1807 Holbrook LLC Block 33.29 Lot 2 and 3, 1803-1807 Holbrook Street, Oakhurst. And Roller Road LLC Block 182 Lot 2, 1414 South Roller Road Ocean.
And Mr. Kirk, can both of these applications be carried without further notice?
Yes, they can.
Thank you.
So we're going to do this conflict engineer, CME engineering, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you want to describe that?
It is, in case of any conflict that our president here may have, it's always a good idea to have a conflict engineer. Oh, you know, most of the time that the township has it, it just was missed at the township and planning zoning board levels this year. So it's a point of housekeeping for all intents and purposes.
So we need a motion? We need to pass a motion, right, Mr. Kirk?
I'll make a motion. I'll actually approve this.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. DiFilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Clu?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman DiBenedetto?
Yes. Okay. So we have a conflict engineer now. New case. Allison, I'm sorry about, how do we pronounce your last name?
McGoffran.
McGoffran. Allison McGoffran, block 5.02, lots 21 and 22, 443 West Park Avenue, Oakhurst, R-4. This is an application for preliminary and final subdivision with a lot line adjustment to create three lots. Two with existing homes, one vacant lot. Attorney for the applicant, Thomas Hirsch. Mr. Hirsch, welcome.
Mr. Hirsch and then Jimmy, before we proceed, I mean, I still hear some noise in the background.
I do too.
Is it just me? So?
No, Amy, could you mute everyone but Tom?
Somebody has their TV on in the background.
Right, exactly. So, Tom.
Tom has to unmute.
Okay. Let's off. Hear it anymore.
All right, Tom, do you want to give a preliminary announcement or you just want to get to the witnesses and swear them?
I'll give you a very brief opening if you're already. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The, the application indicates it's a three lot minor subdivision, which is technically correct, but essentially it's really a single lot being created into two, two lots, but we're taking a piece from the third lot of 12 feet in width to increase the size of the, of the other lot that existed. That's why it's considered a three lot subdivision. Essentially, we have, McGoffran had this property, which is lot tax map, lots 21 and 22, which appear to be like two lots. However, over the years, for various reasons, they merged. So for zoning purposes, it's a single lot, even though we see them listed as lots 21 and 22. So the, the desire was to try to come in as variance free as possible. And Ms. McGoffran will testify as to the effort she made to obtain additional property, which in fact she'd been able to accomplish by virtue of us having a contract to purchase that 12-foot additional strip, which resulted in the two lots that she's really creating out of her lot, being fully conforming as two lot area. And certainly pre, certain pre-existing situations on the lot, which create variances and also the switching of the entrance to the lot from West Park to Wallace. So with that general background, I'd like to first call Mr. McGoffran, Allison McGoffran, have her sworn. And we'll just give you some brief history of the ownership of the property and then we'll get into Mr. Samon's testimony.
Tom, before we start with that procedure, as you know, traditionally, we
Yes.
at least used to have Jim and Bill either paraphrase reports. I'd like to ask the chairman right now if he'd like to do it that way or, or have you have your two witnesses testify, Mr. Chairman? You're on mute, if you could unmute.
I'm fine with Bill, you're giving his overview or Jim, you know.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Not to steal Mrs. McGoffran's thunder here, but I think that we certainly could have Bill and and Jim read their reports. I read the report. Pretty straightforward as to what's going on anyway, so let's hear what they have to say.
Do we have Jim start?
Jim, you have to unmute yourself again.
I hope, yeah, I'm on muted now. Okay, well, Mr. Hirsch explained the reasoning for the subdivision and what's happening, so I won't go over all that. It does create three new lots. There are no variances on two of the lots in terms of the setbacks, in terms of the lot width, lot area. The one lot, which is a lot that fronts on West Park Avenue, will have two minor variances associated with it. Minimum lot depth, 100 feet required, 92.73 feet is proposed. And then the minimum rear yard setback, again, 30 feet's required and 25.4 feet is proposed. I don't have a substantial problem with them. There are some improvements on the new vacant lot, which I think is 2202. Let me just.
Yes, 22, 2201.
22, oh, I'm sorry, 22, no, 2201 is the lot which contains the existing residence.
Yeah, it was 2101.
2101, okay, 2101 has some existing improvements, the garage, couple of patios that should be removed because they're non-conforming. Other than that, I don't have, there's no variances associated with that lot. The tree location and preservation plan, they're taking down two tree qualifying trees. My recommendation is that four trees be, four two and a half inch caliper trees be planted on the parcels. On, it could be spread out over the three parcels planted on one of them, whichever the applicant wants to do in order to make up for those two trees being taken down. And quite frankly, the, the trees that exist on this parcel are marginal at best. But they, they appear to be locusts and they're not really in great shape. So putting four trees in there that will be grow up to be be decent trees, I think is a better alternative. And they are removing two driveways on West Park Avenue that are on Lot 2201 and replacing those with a driveway on Wallace, which again is a substantial improvement. It takes care of really what is a non-conforming condition on that lot where the ordinance requires that when you have a residential lot, the driveway be on the, the street of lower classification in the master plan, which is Wallace Avenue in this case. So I think, I think overall it's, it's a good subdivision.
Do we have Bill paraphraser?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Sandy, I have a report, it stated April 22nd, I actually, by the time I got it out, it was today. And then at the end of the day, I made a minor correction, but I thought it was important to have it in there, so I apologize for that. I'll get to it really quick. So an item one, I just mentioned a lot areas and tell you that all lots have adequate areas and lot widths. The corner lot requires a variance for lot depth. It's kind of a technicality to, because the architect, even though, as Jim noted, that the two driveways that face West Park Avenue and require backing movements to exit into West Park Avenue are being removed. The architectural front of the house will still face West Park Avenue, which means that the rear lot line is the one behind that, if you will, or to the north of it in this case. And so that's the lot depth and that's switched efficient. I think if the architectural house, facade of the house, I'm sorry, switched to the east side, which is impracticable, but certainly conceptual, then the lot depths would be fine. So it's a technicality. Surrounding neighborhood is fully, fully developed and there's no shortage of utilities to support the, the proposed building lot. Number three, I'll just go through real quickly. From an engineering perspective, there's a substantial benefit from removing those driveways on West Park Avenue, as I noted, both of them require backing to make an exit move from the property onto, into West Park Avenue traffic, which is not desirable. The other thing to note is that the existing residence, I'm sorry, a new depressed, no, I'm sorry. The driveway, it's overgrown on the middle lot, I believe that's like the 2101, will be removed. It's not graphically denoted. None of the demolition is really graphically denoted to any great degree on the subdivision plan, but they are in the notes over on the right-hand side of the sheet, if you're looking at it. So all the improvements that Jim mentioned that should be improved, removed are, are proposed for removal. The rest of the stuff is really basically engineering. I, I think that there should be a requirement for a new apron or pavement section at the new driveway on Lot 22.01, that's the corner lot that has the existing residence. Um, I went through that with applicant's attorney this afternoon. I had suggested an apron. They were hoping not to put in an apron. I have no problem except that if it's going to be pavement, that pavement section between the edge of the current pavement in the road and the property line or the street line in that case must be the township plan. It's in the township, it must be the township pavement section. It's in the right of way. And also noted that the slope of the proposed driveway appears to be a little bit steep. It should be adjusted and construction details placed on the plans to satisfy the pavement conditions. Other than that, I, I note that they will probably require a certification of an erosion instead of a control plan. It's my understanding that freehold requires that in the cases of demolition. It doesn't have to do with the 5,000 square feet. My understanding that all demolition requires it, but if they don't, they'll issue a letter of no interest and it's no worries. Tree removal placement or planning is deferred to Jim. And I noted that West Park Avenue is the county road and the subdivision plan indicates a 15-foot wide right-of-way, I'm sorry, easement that I left that word out, right-of-way easement dedication being made at the county. So I have absolutely no, in fact, it's in a good point, it's a good subdivision from an engineering point of view, so I have no hesitation we recommending that the board approve it subject to the three conditions, finalizing all associated and supporting documents to the satisfaction of the board's professionals, bonding for construction and receiving inspections of all right-of-way construction and receiving plot plan approval, including drainage design from the township engineer prior to commencing construction upon proposed lot 21.01. That's the condition, but it may not even fall on this, this applicant down the road. If the applicant decides to sell a lot, it would be on the burden of whoever's developing the property, Lot 2101. So that's my two cents.
And Mr. Hirsch, I, I know that you always provide very great testimony through your witnesses, but I have to say, listening to the board experts, you already have an indication, as I recall, that they've indicated that there is a substantial benefit by the proposed improvements. I would just suggest that you start by either representing on behalf of the owner, maybe having Mr. Samon affirm what the applicant agrees to comply with based on the issues raised by Mr. Higgins and Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yeah, thank you, Sandy. As I, as Bill said, I spoke with him this afternoon after reviewing the report and I spoke with Chet. We went over the, the original report before Bill's amendments. And we have no issue with any of the comments Bill has made, either in a testimony tonight or in, as contained in, in his report. So, you know, as I said, this is a pretty straightforward subdivision with the minor variances that really created, it's pre-existing condition. I mean, the house is where it's at already, that creates one of the variances on the lot. And the one lot line on the depth meets the depth, it's irregular lot, so the one in the back, you know, is slightly deficient. So, you know, again, these are technical variances because the area is met. And I, we're just going to have Ms. McGoffran only testify to verify, you know, how she got the property and the purchase of the additional land, which obviously has to be concluded once the subdivision's approved, you know, we have to, and get the deed.
I don't know if that testimony is necessary, but you certainly.
That's fine. I, I just try to make sure we cover the record.
Yeah, I, I know you always do a very thorough job in that. In, in terms of Jim Higgins' report, can you also represent that the applicant is willing to satisfy all the comments?
Yes. Yes, on the, the one comment essentially about the, the trees we'd be willing to plant as opposed to paying the contribution, the client prefers to plant trees. So the suggestion of the four, I think it was two and a quarter inch or two and a half inch, whatever it was, caliper, we would comply with that portion of the report. And the other improvements, as we said, whether it was clear on the plan or not, that's what on the notes it was, but all the, those stated structures, if you will, in the ground on the, what will now be the new vacant lot will be removed. The, the client will decide along with Chet's input about the, the apron issue or just using the pavement, but we will comply with the specifications as indicated in the engineer's report. And the reason the question was raised is there are no other ones, aprons on the other properties. It's not a huge issue either way. But we'll happy to work with Bill's recommendations and his options and naturally will comply with the technical aspect of that in terms of the construction of. So.
Would you be comfortable with just opening it up, at least right now, to see if the board has any questions about your comments and representations?
Yeah, the, I would just do one thing before that. I just, I stay here, Chet, can you hear me? You're muted, Chet.
Want to have him sworn in?
Well, yeah, I, I was just going to ask him, before you swear him in even, Chet, you, you heard everything. Before we, they open up the pub, you have anything that you want to add? And if so, we'll swear you in and have you testify. Are, are they on the engineering from Bill or any of the comments I made? Did I miss anything? Is there anything you feel you need to either question or add? And if so, we'll swear you in. I feel a little silly not, but I really don't. I think you touched on everything. I think the important thing was to move those driveways off of West Park and bring them on to Wallace and I think that results in a very good plan.
So those comments.
You can open it up to the public if you want.
Excuse me? Hi, everybody. I'm sorry, I just want to introduce myself.
Wait, wait, hold, hold, hold on please. We haven't opened up any of the questions to the public yet.
I'm sorry.
Just, it's all right, just, just, you'll have an opportunity.
Thank you.
It's okay. All right, so anybody from the board have any questions for Tom or our professionals, Jim or Bill?
I just have one quick question. So there was no existing, there wasn't a second structure on any of this land. There was no garage, there was no shed, nothing like that?
There is a garage on the, the, what's going to be the new vacant lot and that's going to be removed.
Okay. No environmental issues, nothing like that? Just structures?
No, just basically technical stuff on this one. Of course, the lots that fronted on West Park, there's two tax lots, both narrow that fronted, fronted on West Park. As Tom mentioned, Tom Hirsch mentioned, under land use law, they're, they merge for land use purposes, but they're still tax lots on map. They were a deep relative to West Park Avenue, so the house was out close, relatively close to the roadway and the garage was behind it to the north. And with the new subdivision line, the, the garage is on the middle lot, which is to be the vacant, developable lot. So applicant will remove the, the remnants of an old driveway and a garage and et cetera from that lot and it'll be a perfectly vacant, developable residential lot.
Yeah, so that was my next question. So the, the lot at some point could very well be developed, but it would just be a single lot for single.
Correct. It can't be subdivided further. It doesn't, I mean, not, not without substantial variances because it, 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 the area is slightly over 10,000 square feet, which is the minimum requirement in the zone and the dimensions are consistent with the zone, slightly larger or equal to. So it would have to, it wouldn't have to come back to the board if it were developed, unless there were variances associated with a proposed development. It would go to the town engineer for a plot plan review, just like typical any other vacant lot in town.
And the McGoffrans have owned this lot for how long or is this a recent purchase?
Oh, you want to swear or in a, a letter, give you that testimony?
1967.
Raise your right hand, please, pronounce the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help me God.
Wait, really? Okay, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
All right, Allison, there was a question about your ownership. How long have you had the property?
My father bought it in 1967. I grew up there. When he passed away six years ago, I inherited the property. It's been in the family since 1967.
Okay. No more questions?
Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, just, just a really quick one. That existing lot 21 that's on the corner, that's conforming, that could be developed now?
Got a house on it?
Yeah. It's got a house. That house could be demolished and a much larger house could be constructed on it.
No, yeah, but my question is, I, I understand that for our purposes, we're considering those two lots as one, but on the tax maps, they're two separate lots. That, that one vacant lot that has the trees on it, I went out there and I took a look, that, that one that's on the corner, that's a conforming lot for the rest.
They've merged for land use, so. Yeah, they've merged, merged for land use purposes. So whether there are two tax lots or 30 tax lots, if as a, as a cluster, if you will, they don't conform to the ordinance requirements for land use purposes. Under the land use law, they merge as a single lot. That's why Tom was saying it's a subdivision of two lots, the corner lot and the one behind it.
Yeah, those two lots may be conforming in area, but they're not conforming in width.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. That's what I was curious about.
Right. For our purpose, we only have one lot here.
Okay.
As we start today, yes.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, so we'll open it up to the public. So all you need to do is state your name and your address and you can ask a question pertaining to our professionals, Jim Higgins, Bill Fitzgerald, Tom. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Daniel. My address is 28 Wallace Avenue. My wife, Odie.
Daniel, we need your last name also.
Daba.
Thank you.
So I'm in Lot 18 on, on Wallace. And I'm just here because I got invited and I had some questions. Lot 2101, I'm curious to know what the dimensions of that lot are, would be after a subdivision.
I'm going to take that, Tom? Yeah, so 2101 will be an area of 10,101 square feet, which is, the minimum is 10,000, that's required. Lot width is 82?
92.
The plan, I have 92. It says 82 on this plan.
It's 92.
92. And the, and the depth of that lot is 109.79 feet.
Is that chat testifying? I can't see your mouth.
No, it's Tommy.
Oh, it's Tommy. I'm reading, I'm, I'm giving an information from the plan that's filed with the board.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that. Are there plans to put up a development on 2101 at any time in the future?
Well, eventually, I mean, the lot, they could build a house, they may sell a lot to, to someone who builds their own house or if they decided they could have a buyer, they could build a lot, build a house for someone. But obviously at that point, building permits have to be obtained, a plot plan, you know, with grading for the lot, et cetera, like any other vacant lot, somebody wanted to build a house. All those procedures would subsequently be followed.
Thank you. I just have a couple more questions. So I, from what I understand, everything on Lot 2101 is going to be cleared out, right? The garage is going to be cleared out, you're going to add some trees and leave it, leave it at that for the time being, correct?
It'll be a vacant lot as of now with any of those, you know, pathways or the garage, any of that stuff will be removed, so it's just a vacant lot. And where the trees are going to be planted, the additional four hasn't been decided yet, but, you know, it may be spread out amongst the two lots or they may all be on that lot, we don't know yet.
Thank you. And then there was one point that I, that I kind of missed. Somebody said something about Lot 2101 would be, something would be the responsibility of the buyer. I, I'm not sure exactly if that was.
No, that was me. What, what I said was as a condition of approval, just a general requirement that it be stated in the resolution that before any development can go on Lot 2101, whoever does it must apply to the town for construction permits and get a plot plan approved by the township engineer. Now, that may be this applicant, if they develop it for their own, in a house of their own or someone in their family, maybe a future buyer, may never happen. Okay, but we just want to state it clearly so everybody knows what has to, what has to happen to that lot.
Understood. I appreciate all the answers and I wish everyone the best of luck. Have anything else?
I have a question. Will it affect, because you're moving the lines, will it affect our property at all in any way?
The line that's being moved is on the south side. It's away from your property and they're just selling, they're selling this southernmost 12 feet to the, the corner property.
Okay, will it affect my taxes?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Good. Okay, thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public have a question? We'll close the public.
If I, if I could just ask Mr. Hirsch to confirm that he doesn't plan to have any more testimony?
Based on the reports of your professionals, what we've heard tonight, at this point, we'll rest, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Can we get a vote?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I don't think that the Buz had any comments. They did ask some questions, but I think we just confirm that they don't have any comments to make.
Do you guys have any further comments?
Comments?
No.
We're good.
Okay. There you go.
We can close the hearing.
All right, let's close the hearing.
Make a motion.
Can I make a? Going to make a motion to close the hearing? John Doofy?
John.
I second.
Roll call, please, Amy.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yep, yes, sorry.
Fisher? Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman de Benedito?
Yes. Can we get a positive resolution for this project, taking into fact both the, our professionals, Jim Higgins and Bill Fitzgerald's recommendations?
I'll make a motion to approve the applicant.
I second.
Roll call, Amy.
Thanks, Peter.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman de Benedito?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We appreciate it.
I make a motion to close our meeting.
I will second that.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman de Benedito?
Yes. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Everybody, thank you.